Good. Okay. At this moment, I'd like to, it's a little after seven, thank you for your patience. I'd like to open up the May meeting of the Laconia zoning board of adjustment, and welcome everybody here. With that, roll call, please.
Mike Delvecchio.
Here.
Roland Mayhew.
Yeah.
Suzanne Perley.
Here.
Mike Foot.
Here.
And Steve Bogert.
Here.
And Ori Gibbs is not present this evening. And we have the planning director, Dean Trevethen, present with us tonight. And I, Robert Moore, will be doing the minutes.
And with the, let the record indicate that we have four voting members, and Mike would be the alternate who will assume the role as a voting member on all issues before the board tonight. Okay? With that, we have the attendance acceptance of the meeting. Everybody get a chance to review the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as distributed.
Second. Any additions, any as-is? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, five zip. All right. We have no extensions. We have the continuation of a public hearing. We started this meeting as advertised at six o'clock at the site, and we held approximately a half hour meeting there on site. And then we adjourned from there and came back here. And at seven o'clock, we're gonna call it back into order. So with that, we're calling back the order. Eighty-four Summit Ave. Applicant is seeking a variance to store trailers in the front yard of the property. Okay. With that, if the applicant could please come forward. What we're gonna do is we're gonna start the meeting as, it'll be brief comments from the applicant. We're gonna open it to the public one more time and take public input. Then we're gonna close it to the public. We'll take the closing statement from the applicant, and then we're gonna bring it to the board for discussion. At that point, when it's brought before the board for discussion, there'll be no public input whatsoever. Okay? So if you have an input, make sure you do it at that point in the meeting when it's brought up. Okay? Please.
Good evening, everyone. For the ones that were able to come tonight, thank you for showing up at my residence for the site walk. Mr. Delvecchio, Delvecchio and Ms. Perley, sorry you weren't able to make it. I know it was pretty important for you specifically to see what was actually going on and to have the site walk, so I was a little disappointed. I hope all is well. Just for the record, I believe the board has two documents. One is a letter from Mr. Phil Lapine at Sixty Summit Ave in Laconia, directly across the street from me, and across Wentworth Cove Road from me. And one is from Mr., another one from Rusty Lapine. Two residents, one owner, one resident at Sixty Summit Ave in support of my request. The way I feel about the situation is I believe everyone has a right to have a trailer or so, whatever they need of their assets on their own property. If you live in an area such as mine, which has been proven tonight that it can be seen from all angles. There's no, you come over the bridge, it can be seen. You drive by boat, it can be seen. You're at Mr. Jennings' house at Seventeen Wentworth Cove Road, it can be seen. You drive down Wentworth Cove Road, it can be seen. You drive down Summit Ave, it can be seen. There's really no privacy at eighty-four Summit Ave, which I feel is a hardship for this situation. Secondly, I feel the hardship is that I have a waterfront that nobody wants to see trailers on the waterfront. But so be it, that's my backyard. I also have a third hardship, which I feel is dealing with two road frontages. One is Wentworth Cove Road being a frontage, and one is Summit Ave. I'm not up here tonight, I'm long-winded, but I'm not up here to reinvent the wheel. You've probably heard all this already. So those are a few of the hardships. I've offered to move forward by installing some privacy bushes, otherwise known as fencing, along Wentworth Cove Road and Summit, excuse me, Wentworth Cove Road and along the property line between myself and Mr. Jennings. The, I've also limited the application to four trailers to be stored. And I think I've proven that most homes in the Lakes region have a boat trailer and/or a jet ski trailer and/or a snowmobile trailer and/or motorcycle trailer, et cetera, et cetera. And by looking around the city today and every day I'm here, and I'm here four and a half days a week, a lot of yards have a lot of stuff, trailers in their front yard. And the city has taken no action in any of those properties over the years. And I have witnessed a lot of their merchandise, known as trailers or motorhomes or RVs or camping trailers and so forth, haven't moved in decades, some of them. Decades. They're not even habitable, and they're still in these front yards, as you wanna call it. So I think the site walk proved tonight that the lesser of the evils owning a piece of property having front, rear, side and side, which my property is front, front, rear and side, the position in which I have the trailers now that were witnessed by four members tonight, and the planning, the planning director, what that showed was that the trailers are currently in the lesser of the four evils. So I believe my intention years ago when I put them there, and as I've been using them and moving them, which I do pretty regularly, shows that my intention is to have it be the lesser of the four evils. There's a lot of trees growing in there now from the winter, and the bushes are coming out in bloom. And I believe I've done my best to keep it as neat and tidy as possible. And just as a matter of record, I believe the jet ski lift that was on the property tonight is not something we're discussing tonight. We can discuss it, but it doesn't speak about jet ski lifts. It doesn't speak about stuff like that. The issue I believe that I was brought with for, to me, in a letter from the, from the city was the trailers in my front yard. So, and just for the record, my jet ski lifts are put in the water in the summer and taken out in the winter. Most people leave them sitting on the beach for the winter. I don't, because in that corner, the snowmobiles like to cross from Guilford across the road of Summit to Laconia on the, across my land, and I allow the club to do so. And one year when I left something there, it got, it was a pontoon, it got dented. So I like to put them in the woods, covered up in the corner, same corner in question. So that's all I have for right now, and I thank you for your time.
Any questions?
Oh, sorry, any questions? Yes, Roland.
I didn't notice this when I was up there, but do you have license plates on those trailers?
So let's see. I have one on the snowmobile trailer, yes. I have one on the dump trailer, yes. And the other trailer is not registered, it stays on the property. And the dunk tank doesn't need one.
And the truck?
The truck, which truck? The bucket truck?
The one out front?
The bucket truck's only there for a couple of weeks. It's to trim all the trees that we just had, the devastation in October. There is a repair plate on that, 'cause I borrowed the truck from Massachusetts. So my business license plate is allowed to put on any vehicle that I choose. And I'm gonna trim the trees, then it goes back to Massachusetts. But it's only for trimming the trees that are left standing on the property from the storm last October. And just, as again, not to repeat, I showed you the logs that are on the property. One pile's going in a week, which really isn't an issue for the board, but I just wanna make it clear that I don't like leaving debris around. I'm not that guy. I wake up every week, I clean the perimeter of the property along both streets every single Friday night or Saturday when I rake and clean. That's why I have my dump trailer, and I pay a lot of attention to my property. Any other questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you. Now with this, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to the public to take any public input at this time. So if anybody would like to come forward and speak, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening, I'm Dave Jennings, I'm the abutter to Mr. Holmesy. You know, my objection here is this ends up to be in my front yard with the way the homes are situated there, you know? And my argument is this should not be approved, because this accumulation of assets, as Mr. Holmesy puts it, continues to grow. And, you know, my position on it is if he can accumulate all these assets, he can probably deal with them in accordance with the zoning issues and statutes that the town currently has. It shouldn't be the burden on the abutters to have to deal with the accumulation of all these assets. And there's no reason why most of these assets can't be left right in his backyard. You know, where they are all summer long, there's no reason for them not to be there all winter long as well. And now with two hundred and thirty feet of frontage on the, in the backyard, there's plenty of room to do it. You know, it all ends up on the abutting property line, which is right in my frontage, and I have to look at it year-round. So if it's not trailers, it's, or tag-along trailers, it's enclosed trailers, it's trucks, it's jet ski lifts, it's snowmobiles, it's something. And they end up migrating onto my property. You know, I did put, I don't know, seventy-five rhododendrons in there, which in time will get to be ten to twelve or fifteen feet high. Takes time for them to grow. But you know what? I shouldn't have to screen my property for them to store this type of commercial business across, on across the property line. You know, that's not what that is. It's a residential area, and he has backyard just like we do. And that's where it either should be stored, or it should follow the ordinance and put it where it belongs. I don't think there's any points of the hardship that have been met here to justify approving this. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Questions, sir?
I'm sorry.
How would you feel if he were to put, cover those items with tarps?
I didn't hear your question.
How would you feel if he were to cover those items with tarps?
Really, still, then you've gotta look at the tops. Then you're just staring at tops out there, covering them over. I mean, the ordinance says build a building, put them in the building.
A fence that you can't see over, that keeps everything there, two sides of this property, how would you feel about that?
If it's hidden behind a fence, and the fence is tall enough to hide it all, you don't have to look at it, it is what it is. You know, I still object to it, but, and I don't feel that that's a proper remedy to cleaning up the front yard.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Fitzgerald of Westcott Law for the Governors Island Club. You've spent what I think is an inordinate amount of time on this particular project, and I'll try not to prolong it any further than I absolutely have to. We've given you a lot of written material in the past. We've analyzed the variance criteria, and I know that you've read it. Hopefully you've refreshed your memory, so I'm not gonna review that in detail at this point, except to say that I believe that we've demonstrated in the written materials that the variance criteria has not been met. And in fact, if you look at the application and the materials that were submitted with the application, the variance criteria were not even addressed. It's not enough to address whether or not this project is keeping with the spirit of the ordinance by simply saying it's in keeping with the spirit of the ordinance. There's been no explanation until this evening of any of the criteria, when Mr. Holmesly addressed very briefly tonight, the criteria dealing with hardship. I would suggest to you that any hardship that exists on this particular property is self-created. It's not the norm to have, despite the statements tonight, it's not the norm for most folks to have a trailer on-site. It's certainly not the norm for most of the lots in the city of Laconia to have a trailer in the front yard. And it is absolutely, positively, without a doubt, not the norm, to have four trailers in the front yard. Those of you who have either viewed the property previously or went to the site visit tonight, see how open it is from Summit Ave, from the abutting street, Wentworth Cove Road, and from around the neighborhood. Putting four trailers in that yard in addition to everything else is simply going to create a situation somewhat akin to the discussion we had out there at the site with regard to the corner of Roller Coaster and Parade Road, where there's, there's an accumulation of a variety of items there. Those of you who walked onto the site tonight, you saw there are a number of vehicles. They may come, they may go. A jet ski or a boat here, part of a jet ski lift there, a plow blade over here. And now we're gonna add four trailers to that. It's simply not in keeping with the neighborhood. It's not appropriate under the ordinance. And we would hope that you would keep in mind that the application itself is fatally defective, because it didn't address any of those criteria. Go back and take a look at it if you have to. But it simply was not addressed. As mentioned before, the hardship is self-created. And Mr. Holmesy, he told you before, previously at a meeting, that the club was stopping him from building a garage. Nothing could be further from the truth. The dispute that ended up in court was the location of the garage. Mr. Holmesy, as you know from documents previously presented, has been granted a permission to build a thirty-two-by-sixty structure. And the location of it, the views and so forth, and Mr. Jennings' input was taken in locating that particular structure. He needs to go ahead and do that. In fact, he doesn't have permission simply to build a garage, from my point of view, at thirty-two-by-sixty. He's practically building a small warehouse out there, which would address all of the problems that we're talking about here. The other issue that needs to be brought forward is this is not the only area where Mr. Holmesy can store this stuff. Most people, with, they have an accumulation along these lines, they make arrangements, sometimes commercial arrangements, to keep the property off-site, or to keep the items off-site. And that would be appropriate here. If he doesn't wanna do it commercially, records show, and the board should be aware, Mr. Holmesy several years ago formed an LLC and purchased property located at Forty-six Woodvale Ave, which is an open lot that he's been storing items on. And that could be used for at least some of this, to relieve the congestion at the Summit Ave site. So for all of these reasons, we think it's time to bring this matter to a conclusion. We've addressed the standing issue before. But again, if you would simply stick to the ordinance, look at the criteria, this application simply doesn't pass muster. To the extent that there is any hardship, it is completely self-created, and that's not grounds for the granting of a variance. Thank you for your time this evening, as before.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself to the record. Let the record indicate, no one else from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Therefore, I'm gonna bring it back to the board. The applicant, do you have closing comments?
I do, thank you once again. Statements are made very broad, and I'd like to clear up some of them. We can go back and forth all night and maybe further, more days. But Mr. Jennings claims that everything's in his front yard. Well, everyone that was on the site tonight knows that's not true, because his frontage is from Wentworth Cove Road from left to right, not across his side yard through into my side yard. If he, simply put, if he doesn't like it, he could put taller bushes right now and be done with it. So I'm willing to spend that money, that's not a problem. I'd rather not have a fence, 'cause fences are kinda, to me, are unneighborly. Bushes are a little more friendly and environmental and good for wildlife, so I'd like to do what I can. He's suggesting to put them in the backyard, on the waterfront. I think everyone knows that that's probably a legal standing, but a ridiculous opinion or thought. As far as the winter goes, we've done things in the winter to prevent, like I said, to prevent them from getting damaged. There's no ability for me to access my backyard, between me and Mr. Jennings, that would be safe for a trailer to go and get in the backyard, 'cause there's a huge tree that's like one of the ones that fell. So there's no way to back a vehicle into my backyard, just so you know, between my house and Mr. Jennings. And to the right of my house is many, 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 many trees. There's no way to get in there. So that's not a possibility. That generates a hardship. I can't get back there. Mr. Jennings speaks about commercial business I'm running. Commercial, he said, "commercial business," you know? There is no commercial entity here. It's all, anything that's on there, they all labeled "not for hire" or "their personal use," and they're registered personally. Snowmobile trailers, that's not commercial. A dunk tank that doesn't need a registration plate is not commercial, it's a toy. It's something that we use twice a year for a party. Mr. Fitzgerald's here on behalf of Governors Island. I'm a member of Governors Island Club, not by choice. There's a lawsuit. It's been on the front page of the paper for six long, tiring years. The variance criteria that he speaks of was met. And I think if the variance criteria in my application wasn't met, the board would have addressed it to me and said, "Mr. Holmesy, we can't have you be heard, because you didn't meet the criteria. You need to meet the criteria." And I've proven to this board numerous times that verbally, on record, that I've shown the hardship five different ways. It's not an opinion, it's a hardship. So that's been proven, I think that's been, you know, addressed and answered. The situation, Mr. Fitzgerald claims is the hardship has been self-created. I didn't create two road frontages and lose one side yard. I didn't create a property that's seen visibly by all four angles at twenty-four hours a day with no, with no privacy. I did not create that. Again, his theory is just because I own an asset doesn't mean I created the hardship. I have a one-acre piece of property that I take very good care of in the city, in which I pay seventeen thousand dollars in real estate taxes on, and I like to keep it neat and clean. And if you care to, drive down there every Saturday morning, you'll see me raking the street and raking the curbs and cleaning up my property along the trees, the pine trees, that dump every single day of the week, so they don't end up in the street, and I do it every single week. And it goes in my dump trailer, then it goes to the transfer station. As far as Mr. Fitzgerald's statement that it's not normal, it's not the norm for houses in this area to have trailers. If you turn in Summit Ave, and you go down to my house, and you turn left on Wentworth Cove Road, and you go to the end, and you turn left again on Woodvale Drive, and you go down, turn left again on Rolling Lane, that neighborhood has fifty-two trailers in it right now that I counted. Fifty-two trailers in three streets. I think Mr. Fitzgerald of what's normal in the Lakes region as far as trailers is way off. I really, I could go on and on and on. I'm here to ask permission for something that was a complaint made. I've been a neighbor and a property owner for nineteen years in this neighborhood. I've supported every possible program in the city. And I feel that this property is justified in its application. And I believe my presentation and willingness to accommodate Mr. Jennings by putting up shrubbery and Mr., another neighbor who's not here tonight, who's been here in the past, he's obviously not here tonight for a reason. Maybe he changed his mind, maybe he didn't, I don't know. But he's not here. I'm willing to put up bushes along Wentworth Cove Road to close it in. I think that adds to the environment. It adds beauty to the neighborhood, as well as my property, and it hides the trailers that, that one gentleman in the room, who's my abutter, doesn't like to see, and a club that's on the opposite side of the lake, opposite side of the bridge, doesn't like to see. Thank you very much. Is there any other questions for me?
Any questions of the applicant, final questions? There being none?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
With that, I'm gonna close it to the public. There'll be no more public input. Bring it to the board for discussion. I'll start off then, if that's okay. The situation is kinda unique in its own manner. We've addressed trailers in homes before. They were sitting in front yards and whatnot. One party had a camper over on South Main Street. Wanted to keep it inside and stuff, and they were redirected to move it into the backyard and to make any accommodations necessary to move it. If not, they could keep it in a commercial place. Now, the property at hand is bordered by two fronts and the lake. So it's bordered on three sides. The backyard, as we've seen, is inaccessible. The trailers are in the yard next to the neighbors. I'm clear sight of the neighbors. To me, it matters not whether it's in the front view or the side view, but as you stand either at the trailers and look across, do you see a house in the front of the neighbor's house? And if you were standing in the driveway in front of the neighbor's house, you look directly into a bunch of trailers. Stuff. Okay. Zoning's a very delicate balance between the use, proper use of a property and the proper views and accommodations of the neighbors. Okay? And that's why the neighbors are brought into it as part of the formula, to review such matters, okay? So in that delicate balance, as I was indicating, it comes to thought, you know, what's reasonable in a lot of accommodations, trying to accommodate someone to fully use their property to its fullest without infringing. Okay? And that's where the zoning comes in. Are we infringing? So if we're infringing, and in this case, it's infringing on the views and whatnot of the use of someone else's property. Okay? Now, in saying that, we as a board says views are not guaranteed. But views, as long as the person is within the code, is not guaranteed. And I bring to instance, because a question's gonna come up, a thirty-five-foot roof. Well, that's code. Code says thirty-five foot is legal. So the abutter loses his view of the lake, because there's a thirty-five-foot obstruction that is code. Part of the code ordinances, well, oh, well, I'm sorry. Okay? Now, if something is not part of the code, and it is now obstructing, that's what the code's there for. So it doesn't hinder the others. Butters.
Butters.
Let me finish my train, and then I'll let you go. I know you're itchy.
Which is good, that's what I want. Is, so, sometimes, and that's what I, I sometimes try to achieve out of having site visits, is there reasonable accommodations that will satisfy all parties? So where everybody can say, "Okay, this is workable." Sometimes they are. We did a deck, it was next to a condominium association, where after we got the condominium association over to view the facts,
association over to view the facts with what the guy was trying to accomplish, they go, "Oh, well, we don't have a problem with that." And a deck was built. There was happiness amongst all the applicants and the, uh, the abutters, and everybody walked away happy. So that is something, it's also something we try to achieve, is can we make everything work within a reasonable manner without upsetting this, this, or this? Okay? Sometimes we can, sometimes we can't. Okay? In this case, and it's up for debate, you got two avenues. Okay? One is, no, we can't accommodate it. Okay? You can say, "It doesn't meet four of the five criteria," and walk away. Okay? That's easy and well done. The other plan is, can you relocate this thing so it's not in the right? If I was facing the house, no, if I was the house, is it something that can be relocated from the right front to the left front? Can we put a fence around it at the left front? So the reason why I say, "Can it be relocated?" Is, it seems like one of the sticking points within this is a neighbor just don't want to, every morning, have a cup of coffee looking at it. Okay? I can understand that. These homes cost a fair amount of money, and the one thing you would like to be able to do is have a cup of coffee in the morning without looking at something that's not pleasant. Okay? So if something like this, let's say, was moved to the left corner and a fence made of natural colors was put around it, so it wouldn't stick out like a sore thumb, like white would stick out like a sore thumb, but a fence of whatever material of natural colors was placed around it to accommodate four trailers, then can we make that work for all parties involved? It's a question that we can discuss, or not. Okay? Now, as far as to me, the applicant, one's saying it's not complete, and some of them else saying it's is complete, is, okay, thank you. Because we have a lot of residents in the city of Laconia that come to us with the best they can do with their applications without having attorneys and stuff like that. It happens all the time, okay? And we listen to what they talk about. And we listen, and we make our judgments based on what they say. And because not everybody can put everything in words like this, okay? But they can talk, and that's what they do. And so that's, once again, it's up to the board to determine, were the criteria verbally met? Or is it strictly where it wasn't written down in that? That's an individual choice. Okay? These are all my opinions and thoughts on the situation. I say it all this way so that I encourage discussion from the board so that we can see which direction we need to go. Okay?
You want to go first?
Sure.
No?
Oh, yes. I don't mind. Go ahead. Do you want to go first? Go ahead.
I, I'm stuck on, again, on hardship. Uh, and I appreciate the fact that this, Mr. Holmes, he sees it as a hardship, that he can't have four trailers in his front yard. I think that's an excessive request under the ordinance. And secondly, he has the ability to build a garage on-site, so where's the hardship?
Okay.
I mean, that's my, that's my point. I mean, there, there is no hardship. He has a permit for a garage where all this stuff could go. So why are we going to, like, make an exception to the ordinance for him when in fact, he has a permit for a garage?
Okay.
Is that legal?
That's exactly my point. I thought that, well, the first night we met on this, uh, it was Mr. Fitzgerald talked about, uh, there was a court case in which Mr. Holmesy was allowed to build a 30 by 60-foot storage facility. I don't understand why that facility hasn't been built. I'm sure Mr. Holmesy has his reasons, but the thing is, that is a solution. It's been presented to us, and it's been present, presented by the courts.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. Any thoughts, Michael?
Richard, you know, I couldn't make it tonight, but I have driven by your house a few weeks ago.
Nope, you got to address the board, not the...
And, you know, it's, it, it looks messy there. I, I feel for Mr. Jennings.
Okay.
You know, I, I wouldn't want to live next door to it.
Okay.
It's unsightly.
Okay.
It is a unique piece of property, and I got a better understanding, recognizing that, uh, there's two frontages on that. But when one buys a high-profile piece of property like this that is out there, one recognizes that it comes with, people are going, you buy it and you know people are going to be looking at it, and everybody's eye is drawn to it. Is it nice, is this, or is that? Sure, it's one of those point pieces of property. And no, you wouldn't want to fill up the lakeside of it. I've been around this property on all sides now over the past couple of days. And you, you really wouldn't want to have a full-blown clutter on that side also. There must be a way to get back there because the, uh, jet ski lifts move forward and back, so there's got to be some sort of tractor way around. I feel uncomfortable really saying, "You know what? Yeah, this, go ahead, store them there." And yet, it's kind of using the board to say, "See? I can do it." I think there are other options, be it the fence, be it the previously approved garage, and I haven't seen any designs on that, but I think those are available solutions that could be discussed. I am personally disinclined to add, or, um, the word I'm really looking for is to, uh, to say, "Yeah, that clutter's okay." And I wouldn't want it to be on the board to say that we approve that.
Okay. So...
And, and it's because of the intensity of it.
Okay.
For a small lot.
So if I could recap, then, it, it appears that the board is more inclined to decline the application than to accept the application. Okay? And based on that, and the discussion, and I think it was healthy discussion, uh, we looked at all the aspects of it, uh, we've made site plan, uh, visits, we've listened to three different meetings. So I'm comfortable in saying, if, if that's the way the board's inclined to go, then we might as well go ahead and have a motion. Is someone prepared to make a motion?
I always get put on the spot.
If you wish, we could say, based on this before you start, if you're uncomfortable with it, what we can do is we can ask the city attorney to craft a motion based on the, uh, motion that was basically provided by the board, that it's... I don't think we have to do that.
No, I, I think, I, I think we could get through a, a motion. I think that we're all in agreement, uh, that it's, that the intensity of four trailers is just not acceptable on that lot. I mean, if it was one and we could shield it and move it, but four, it, it's a big thing. So, um, the, you know, and, um, so, so I think that, um, I'll, I'll make a motion, like granting this variance, uh, would be contrary, uh, to the public interest and...
Before you start, you're making a motion to deny?
To deny.
To deny.
Right.
Okay.
Um, it would, it would be contrary to the public interest and, and it, uh, and the spirit of the ordinance would not be observed. This, uh, um, the storage of four trailers in plain view, it, it does alter the essential character of the shorefront residential neighborhood, and, uh, and as, uh, testified by abutters, it does create, um, an eyesore, and, uh, this is, um, what the zoning ordinance is, is meant to prevent, um, to allow, um, peaceful enjoyment of one's property. Substantial justice, um, would not be achieved by granting this, uh, this variance. In this case, um, the benefit to the general public by denying the variance is much greater than any hardship to the applicant. Um, the applicant has the ability to build a garage on his site or to store his trailers off-site. The value of surrounding properties could be diminished if the, um, variance is granted, and, um, uh, literal enforcement of the ordinance does not result in any unnecessary hardship. The hardship, I think, is self-created, um, by the applicant, and, um, there are options available, um, to the applicant for storing this amount of equipment, um, on his property. So, um, with the approval, he went through the process with the city of getting an approval for a garage, and he should follow up on that. That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion of the motion. Yes?
If I could ask, uh, if the, if the board votes to deny to include a, a timeline to bring the property into conformance?
What is a, would be considered a 30- or 60-day timeline?
Normally, when we, when we send out violation letters, we usually do a 30-day.
Okay. I'd like to add an addendum to your motion, that there be 30-day timeline set to bring the property into compliance. Is that...
So approved.
Okay.
Appropriate.
Okay. We have a motion that has been amended. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, motion to deny passes. Okay, sorry. You have 30 days through to, uh, 30 days from tonight to file a rehearing request, if you wish. Okay? And then you would submit the documents set forth and for us to make a judgment on rehearing it or not, if it's, uh, something you might have erred or missed on. Okay? Uh, if you need specifics about that, the Robert and Planning would be able to help you to understand those things set up for a rehearing.
No problem, thank you.
Okay. So, that's that.
I'd just like to say thank you for your time.
Okay. Public hearings?
I gotta get some water, if there's water.
Is there water in there?
There's usually some in back there, Steve.
Oh, that's fine. I live. Okay, applicant, uh, all right, public hearing, possible consideration and vote note. The poss, the purpose of this agenda section is for the board to have a presentation for the applicant and open a public hearing for the public to provide input. The board may also deliberate the application, decide, and conduct a final vote at this time. The, uh, first application is 121 Pleasant Street. Applicant, there's a question of variance for density. Property is located in the professional zone. Is applicant here? Introduce yourself for the record and tell us, uh...
My name's Joe Driscoll. I'm attorney at Martin Lord Nosman. I represent MDMT Properties. The manager is Mike DeRoche. He's here as well.
Thank you. Thank you. So if you'll explain what you're looking for and tell us how we can help you, and go through the criteria, and, once again, you're the agent, uh, Driscoll?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Joseph H. Driscoll?
Yes, sir.
The fourth.
All right. So as you can see, we've, we've addressed all the criteria in the, in our application. I'm going to try to be as brief as I can because I've taken part in many of these things and understand that they can get rather extensive, and I'm sure frankly, you have more questions and, and that's a better form to do this. But, um, just to begin, uh, the, the applicant before you is MDMT Properties, and, uh, Mike DeRoche is here. Pointed at? Do I need to stop?
Nope, you should be on camera, not us.
I don't want to be on camera, though. Why are you doing that to me? I'm going to blush.
There you go. Thank you.
Um, MDMT Properties, and I just want to address this in the beginning. This is not some, you know, multinational conglomerate that's coming in here. It's a small family LLC, uh, MDMT are actually the initials of Mike's children. Tim and his wife, they do some property investment around New Hampshire, particularly with multifamily homes. And one of their recent purchases is 121 Pleasant Street. That is the now formerly, uh, pink building that was on the corner of Pleasant Street and New Salem Street. That is currently a multifamily unit, uh, actually has been since it was built in the late 1800s. Uh, the amount of units has increased, and frankly, we're here requesting a density variance, uh, from you folks. And I, I do want to highlight right now that our point in a density variance is to increase, uh, to an additional unit that does not require any building, anything of that nature. It is all occurring within the structure that is on that property. Okay? So I don't want anybody thinking, "Oh, we're going to put a small addition on or anything." It's all within what's pre-existing. Now, recently, they purchased this property and, and frankly, I, I've sat on boards with some members of you. You, you all know that I'm, uh, I grew up in this town, actually. Rob and I went to school together. Um, and I'm very happy to see efforts like this to be done, especially in our downtown area. Uh, we are, frankly, if you look at the new land use chapter, which I focused on quite a bit in, uh, in our, in our application, so, you know, knock on wood, hope that one passes. It, it's a focus of revitalization, of addressing our aging housing stock. Um, and this is exactly the kind of project that we have going on here. And, I, I mean, frankly, i- if you look at the property now, uh, Mike's getting people driving up to him on the street. I mean, the, the paint's been great, but I mean, it, it, inside is fantastic. I mean, we're talking, you know, completely gutted units, new bathrooms, new kitchens, new windows, new doors, and frankly, from a safety perspective, a 20-year-old lead order that he addressed. Um, they saw this as an investment opportunity and have done it right. And that's really important for us because what we're talking about here is a very visible downtown property. Uh, a lot of the efforts, the colonial going in, everything here has been focused on bringing people to our downtown, and you have a main intersection right here that we're talking about, right on the corner of New Salem Street and Pleasant Street. I've been a kid, I always wanted to know what the heck the thing looked like. So actually, I know Mike because we, we coached lacrosse together. And when I found out that he bought the thing, I made him take me through the... out that he bought the thing, I made him take me through the place because I always wanted to take a look and it turns out, you have this adjoining barn structure in the back that literally does nothing other than stores things on the second floor and has a garage on the first floor, has a third floor too. And it's been there, so why can't we maximize that too? You know, you're a very intelligent group of people, you, you all understand that it's much easier to invest in a property when it's gonna be a residence, when it's gonna be something and it's gonna give back to you. If it's just gonna be a storage building, you have a lot less opportunities there. You don't have the ability to invest in it as much as, as possible. So, that's where this request has been born from. And, you know, on the surface, it may be a little kinda, you know, we, we are asking for something. And this board recently went through something where they were asked for something and, and had to deliberate and think about all these things that go towards a variance. A variance is a deviation from the law. We understand that. It's not a permit, it's not, hey, you're supposed to say yes if I check off all these boxes, it's us asking for something. And why we're asking for this is frankly because, and, and, you know, again, I've sat on boards with members of this board, kinda where the line got drawn doesn't make sense. His property, if you look at that intersection, is in the professional zone. And as I was very clear there, I'm not letting the cat out of the bag, it's currently non-conforming. But if he was diagonally across that intersection, you'd have like twenty units in the downtown residential zone. I mean, that's just being from one corner to another and we're talking about a structure that was erected in eighteen eighty-five, well before anybody took that map over there and put a bunch of lines on it to dictate some zoning. So, it's, it's a structure that more than can handle what we're talking about here. But, obviously, we need some permission, so we come to you folks. And what we're trying to do is, is maximize this project, this reinvestment, this revitalization in our downtown as much as possible. We've had some conversations, uh, there's a, the building next door northerly on Pleasant Street is a condo association, Mike's spoken with a woman over there, she thinks what they're doing is great. You know, there's some overgrown landscaping that they're gonna address, that, you know, they're, they're now active neighbors frankly, that are, that are bringing this beautification effort there and we're just trying to go one step further and enhance that. So, frankly, the, I'm sure biggest concern that's gonna really have for a lot of folks here is, okay, what you're asking to do is increase density. So, what are natural issues that people have with a density increase? You're talking about, uh, overburdening, you know, city resources, uh, increased traffic, you know, tho- those types of things. Well, again, why I say, I think the line was kinda, you know, pushed down a little too far, is you're talking about a major intersection there. Frankly, I came through it today and there was an accident, you know, I lived down the road from there, but it's quite common. But across the street from, well, behind his property, you're talking about a bank-owned parcel, commercial land where people, they use it as a general parking lot mainly for their employees, but an ATM. Across New Salem Street, you got train tracks, then you have the train station, you have, you know, restaurant, you have a, the burrito me sitting there, you know, you, you have multiple businesses there. Across the street is, is an open lot, but then across the street and further north, you know, you have, uh, commercial entities there. So, we're not really talking about a, a situation where you're looking at a residence in the middle of a very small residential neighborhood and you're asking to increase this. You're already, you, you're talking about adding one unit in an area that more than can handle this, this is a ma, these are major thoroughfares. And every sort of unique, well, unique's the wrong word, every particular thing with regards to this unit, and I'm going right at what I targeted in my application, is the question of parking, can be handled right on this lot. So, we're not asking to, we're not asking you for a favor and then saying, oh, by the way, um, I also need three others attached to it. We're asking you for this one favor, um, to look at this and say, okay, yes, this property has been placed on this unnecessary hardship by a group of people just like yourselves with all the best of intentions to provide some zoning and it's on one side of the line and not the other and if you make this a favor, we can handle all of it. So, you see that there is a parking diagram in your application and there's a scale indicated there and frankly, we've indicated nine spots, we, we honestly believe that there could be more than that, but if you look at the, uh, the requirements, one and a half spaces per, per unit is necessary, there's, there's five, we would increase this to six. So, that in and of itself takes care of that additional burden. Just wanna make sure I'm hitting your points here. I, you know, it, not to look at other applications, but I, I think a stumbling block that all of you had with the last application, uh, that we heard about this evening, was impact to surrounding properties. That seemed to be a big focus, we heard from a gentleman that's in here. We are talking about as tiny of an impact, if any whatsoever, that it's negligible in this application. Again, this is the same structure, we are in fact gonna revitalize and beautify this structure and you're putting people in that same structure to live there with parking that's already accounted for on the lot. There is, there is nothing that's gonna negatively impact and again, upon our, our conversations, people are supportive of these efforts because they've seen the fine work that Mike and his family has done so far on this project. So, we're not, um, we're not creating anything, we're not creating an eyesore, we're not adding to, you know, noise pollution, sound, smell, anything like that, what we're doing is we're taking a multifamily building and keeping it a multifamily building just with an additional unit. Let's see. Just wanna make sure I'm getting all your questions. Similarly, uh, just to cover the first two prongs because I think quite often boards concentrate on surrounding properties and unnecessary hardship and I don't mean to skip A and B, um, not contrary to the public interest and that the spirit of the ordinance is observed. I, I, for the same reason as the property value thing, I, I don't think we have any, uh, con, anything contrary to the public interest. What you're talking about doing, if, if, especially if you're concerned about other multifamily units, non-conforming units, is you're talking about some, a property that by its very location and age of the building is in and of itself unique. I don't think anybody here is creating any sort of dangerous precedent or anything. Mike and his family are not tearing down this structure and putting up a high-rise or something, we are utilizing the building that's there and it's in the very corner of a very, very overly, I don't mean that in a derogatory way, overly zoned area of our downtown community. Again, as I've cited in, in our application, if you look at the, the new proposed land use chapter is, is very clear that, that it's, it's very hard to comply with these things, that there are so many zones in our downtown, that it is conceivable that you end up on one, the wrong side of the line. So, that's kind of the way we look at that and in terms of the spirit of, of the ordinance. The ordinance is there and I thought all of you did a very excellent job of, of really diving into that in the last application. You, you're talking about protecting people, protecting people's property values and there's nothing here that's gonna be impacted negatively. It's gonna in fact make this project be even greater and even better than it was, which I'm sure all the neighbors would appreciate and they go from having five neighbors to six. And maybe they, you know, forge good friendships or something, but it, it, in and of itself doesn't really, it's not contrary to the protections that an ordinance is put in place for. And that's, that's why you're here, is as gatekeepers. And this request doesn't fly in the face of that role by any means. Frankly, it, it allows a forward-thinking and forward-moving downtown to continue to grow. It encourages people such as Mike and his, his family to keep investing in this area and offer some very nice and, you know, newly renovated housing, try to keep our, you know, our graduates staying local because now they have great places to stay and live and work. So, this is, you know, one small step in that whole chain and we hope that you see that, see it that way and that, uh, when you look through the application, that you feel that everything, um, all your questions have been answered, obviously, we're both here to address anything. Me more from the legal, Mike more from the, uh, hey, what's it look, look like on the inside these days, uh, 'cause I haven't spun by in a while, so, um, if there are any questions, please fire away.
Currently, how many units?
There are five.
Five current units?
Yes, sir.
And they're all in the main house?
Yes, sir.
And the bar, barn and garage is currently just a barn and garage?
Uh, yes. So, the first floor is garage space, second floor has just been used for storage, uh, second and third floor frankly.
And that's the portion that you're discussing tonight?
Yes, and the, in our preliminary discussions, obviously, we have to come through you before a full plan or anything would be done, uh, would be just a second floor unit in that building.
Now, currently, how many of the five units, are they two bedrooms, one bedrooms, or what is the mix there of the five current units?
I'll turn that one over now.
Mike DeRoche, uh, there's, um, two two bedrooms and three one bedrooms. And three of them are occupied, two of them are, uh, being renovated.
And in the, uh, the one, it's one unit you wanna put in the barn?
Yes, yes.
And that would be?
Two bedroom.
Two bedroom. And none of the units have to share a bath, they're all independent?
Yes, oh, yes. Yeah, they'll, they all have their own kitchens, bathrooms.
Just trying to make sure there's not a flop house.
Uh, no, it's not a flop house.
First sign of a flop house is shared bathrooms.
I'm gonna have to go look it up, I guess. What? And I'm curious, you just go and do the second floor of this, you're not going, how are you going to utilize the third floor of the barn?
Well, there, there would be, um, we're going to, um, put a door so you can't go up that, up into the third floor. You know, it, it could be used, it could be, uh, finished as finished space, but the cost of doing that, um, is, just isn't worth it and there's no means of egress other, so it would have to be part of the second floor. And you're just not, um, it's two bedroom is what we wanna, we just wanna finish the one floor.
So, it's not even on the table?
Yeah, no, I ju, I'm just curious as these things develop, but-
Yep.
Now, the, as I'm facing from the street side to Pleasant Street side, these parking paved area and parking spaces? They're not currently there, are they?
They are. Um, there's two driveways to the property, the one on the right goes all the way up and then turns around the back of the building or toward the barn and then on the left, it goes, uh, straight back toward the two bay garage.
And these plants, they're all new plants or is that exist-
No, there's a, um, between the driveway on the right and New Salem Street, there's a row of, um, very, uh, you know, older landscaping bushes that are in place now.
How are you dealing with fire suppression in the barn?
How are we dealing with fires?
I mean, is that something, I mean?
Well, I mean, we would, we would, uh, we have a garage underneath, we would go with fire-rated five-eights drywall, um, on the ceiling, on the ceiling of the garage and then we would do the same thing in the apartment, which is what we're doing in the units that we're renovating. Is we have fire-rated doors, five-eights drywall. We went through with, um, Charlie from the fire department and, and got his recommendations.
And they didn't say anything about iron pipe or anything like that?
No.
Or?
No.
Anybody else?
I just think the building looks great.
Thank you. We'd like to do to the barn what we did to the front, which is, you know-
I know, I, I, we were, uh, to dinner a couple of weeks ago and just walking by before I even knew about this and, uh, you know, just saying that, you know, whoever owns that really has done a nice job.
Thank you.
I gotta get downtown more.
Any other questions at the moment? With that, I'd like to open it up to the public, you may take a seat for a second.
Thank you for your time.
I think it's only gonna be for a second. I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. That the record indicate no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, therefore I'll bring it back to the board. Any closing comments?
Never wanna miss an opportunity, but, uh, no, I, I just, we thank you for your time, uh, you've been very attentive, we appreciate, uh, all the kind words you've said about the project so far and we just hope that you, you know, we've answered all the criteria that you need us to and, you know, if there's anything more information that you need, please feel free to ask or request. Thank you.
Any final questions before you sit? Okay, with that, I'm gonna close it to the public, bring it to the board for discussion.
I'm totally in favor of it, I think it's a great, um, uh, asset to the downtown with no physical impact, you know, just by using an existing structure, um, to provide additional housing in the downtown, so I'm, I'm in favor of it.
I have one concern. I need to be the, I was looking at it from the dark side, but I, I think this is a beautiful project, what you're doing too, but my concern has nothing to do with your project. It has everything to do with a decision we made several months ago and I'm looking at precedent. We turned down a project like this in another part of the city, over in Baldwin Street. How is that going to square with what, when, what we'd like to do tonight?
I think, I, I remember that project really well, I'm sure you do too, and that was a really congested area and the site was totally different and the, and the conditions were totally different than, than this one, so-
They weren't totally different.
Well, I-
There was a apartment house with a garage in the back of it that they wanted to turn into a, uh, an apartment and they had the parking to, to go along with it.
But the, the density in that neighborhood and, and the location of that property in that lo, neighborhood was, there was so much going on and I think we looked at the neighborhood as a whole and the impact on the neighborhood and that's how we made our decision, but that's just my recollection.
Is that the one on Baldwin Street?
Yeah. Well, I'm just concerned that if we-
And that was a, a garage in the back.
Yes, it was.
You'd have to rehab and it was, it was off the edge of the property. It was a shed, yeah, which would have to be, yeah, it was a totally different situation.
No, I don't think it was.
This is an attached building where we're not touching the outside of the building at all, you know what I mean? We're just dealing inside the building.
I think that one dealt with the code because what they were going for was a, uh, the situation, they could have added a unit if all the units were attached.
That's right.
Okay? And in the instance on Baldwin Street, the units weren't attached, okay? So, in order to fulfill the multifamily expansion, the attachment had to be there and it was a separate unit on its own on Baldwin Street. And in this case, as you're trying to grow the unit, the unit is attached to the other unit here in this case.
That is a distinction.
That was a significant distinction between the two and its interpretation.
But my concern is that property was owned by a group of lawyers who didn't mind going to court, even though they lost, but I'm wondering, I, looking at it from the point of view that they may decide it's not gonna cost them anything to go to court again.
No, they can't, I mean-
A, every property must stand on its own.
That's right.
Value, okay? And cause they have their own unique criteria to meet in doing this and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Dean, please.
I just want us to be prepared.
Nope, that's fine, that's great. The discussion part of this is what provides the ability for if it ever does go to court, the judge listens to all the discussion that the board takes and it's not taken lightly when we make these open discussions and stuff. The judge knows that we are taking it in earnest of, of how we're applying the zoning code, okay? And what I see is the significant difference in what we did, 'cause we were all on that board for the Baldwin Street and, uh, there was a whole line of specific questions that had to fill in the blanks. A, they were flipping and flopping, oh, I want a grandfather, oh, I don't want a grandfather, oh, if I'm grandfather, I'm allowed to do this, oh, no, I don't want my grandfather, I want my multifamily, oh, I got my multifamily, you can't go back and get grandfather, one or the other, and they made these decisions themselves to go down a certain path. And once they made the path of multifamily, the point of the multifamily was, then you had to, if you wanted to expand that property, the living unit- the living units that were on that property, they had to be attached into one, okay? And that expansion could happen. In this instance, it was a separate unit, so that didn't apply. Once they chose to go down the path of that type of, of uh, review, okay? Now, with that being said, i- i- if I had to use the same thought, A, they're not going grandfather multifamily grandfather, they're multifamily, correct? So, uh, five units multifamily already. So, that would then kick in, is the unit attached? And I do believe it's attached, from looking at the drawing, it's attached.
The garage is attached.
So, that, the garage is attached to the unit, so that kind of for, to me, fulfills that portion of the obligation. And uh, is that correct? Or am I misinterpreting that?
No, you're good.
Okay, so, that takes an account that way and says, okay, now we can look at the density portion of it and say, we can go down the density discussion alone, because it met the criterias of how to get to that density question. In which case then that's what brought these gentlemen before us is the density side. So, I think I'm quite comfortable, uh, if, and I doubt they're gonna go down that path, cause they're gonna end up costing them money to go to court over something like that, so I doubt.
All right.
But it was excellent, because it gave us good discussion, and, and how we support our decision, one way or the other. So, discussion's great.
I think it's a good project, and I like how it uh, reutilizes an un- otherwise underutilized structure. And as we discuss about how we can revitalize our downtown or our city, one of the things about rental units is the average age of the rental units in the city of Laconia is
Too old.
Too old, significantly older than what a young professional would want to come and rent in. So this takes it out of uh, or a, or an old professional. Or a family, is this in a two bedroom, you know? So I, I feel that this would be a positive project and uh, help maxum, maximize the uh, use of this property. And give a reason to maintain and restore the barn structure.
If I'm not mistaken, if I can add into that, we have two other Victorians, like, that's a Victorian style. And I think there's two other Victorians on the same side as the street as that, that have, I think at the time they were called Surry, Surry, S U R R E Y, barns, cause they were a horse and buggy, and they were able to carry their horse and buggy in. And they've been modified into apartments.
Yeah.
And stuff like that, and there are two of them, one's a kind of a goldish yellow, one it's on the right, and the other one, um, I forget which color that is, but I think it's like further down, going north on Pleasant Street. And they both have redone those barns into apartment type situations, you know? So, if you was to look at some of the finished products, they've been, they were done fifteen years ago, ten years ago, something like that. But this, to me, is like a newer version of the same thing, okay? Just making use of, of something that's there.
Steve, uh, the only thing I'd like to request, Mike, is the, the green space between the driveway and Pleasant Street or Salem?
Please address the board, you can't address them.
The green space that um, is along the driveway, to put some evergreens along there, so it doesn't look so much like a parking lot when it's, when it's full of cars. Cause it is a residential area.
Is that the one along New Salem?
Yes.
Okay, where it says plants, put some, something else.
Well, there's already plants there, but um, if it can be enhanced with a little more evergreen type plants to block off the driveway when it's full of cars, from the wild trail right across the street.
Okay. Okay.
Otherwise, that, that rear apartment would probably be prestige, I'm, I'm familiar with the barn, and uh, I'm sure that'll be a great apartment. I'm all, I'm all for it.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, like to entertain a motion?
Um, I'll, I'll make a motion, um. I'll make a motion to approve um, the application um, for a variance uh, to deviate from the max- maximum density um, that site allowing for um, the development of one additional two bedroom unit um, above the existing barn. The um, guarantee the variance would not be con- contrary to the public interest and the spirit of the ordinance um, is observed. The uh, building at Pleasant Street is already a multi-unit residential property um, that contains uh, five units. And the addition of one additional unit um, in the uh, back uh, does not uh, violate any basic zoning objectives, um, and does not threaten the health, uh, safety or welfare uh, of the general um, public. There's no substantial change in the use being proposed, and no substantial change in the building being proposed. Planning variance would do substantial justice, um, the uh, benefit to the applicant is far outweighed by any negative uh, impact to the general public. Again, the use is consistent with the area's current use, and the character of the neighborhood um, is not effective, is not affected. And there's no harm to the general public, and values of surrounding properties would not be diminished. The um, uh, the hardship is that the, the, the property is, is unique, um, I think, and, and it's, it, the property is unique in its, in its setting. Um, it's right on the corner um, between uh, two districts, and uh, which in one case would allow um, uh, for the density increase. And um, there's just no benefit uh, to the, to the neighborhood in enforcing the ordinance in this case. And, you know, the use, the proposed use um, is, again, it allowed use uh, in the zoning, uh, in the, uh, in the district. And um, it's certainly um, a reasonable um, use. And uh, and the applicant has the ability to satisfy parking in the area. Um, we do ask that um, if at all possible, some additional screening be placed in the par- on the uh, New Salem. Is it the New Salem Street? Yeah, the New Salem Street.
If I may kind of tweak that a little bit, that last section is to, the applicant is to work with the planning department on the choosing of a plant that would help shield, let them do their job with it and pick with the applicant, some kind of shielding plant, and that way will make sure that the planning understands what was being requested. Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
So we have a motion?
I'll second that.
We have a second. Discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Okay, enjoy the edition. Please work with planning on that clause for the uh, landscaping and things move forward.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
I'm gonna take a second and get me another.
Mike, did you ever get a copy of our um, zoning board rules and regulations?
I do have one, yeah. I know, I'm not a real privy on it yet.
Okay.
I'll get there.
Yeah, you will. The input is the, the basics, procedure is, just gotta learn it.
You don't seem that strict on the planning board.
With that, application two zero one eight dash zero 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 six, Pride's Point, applicant seeks a variance to change the green space coverage limited from twenty percent to twenty-five percent. Please come forward and introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening.
Tell us how we can help you.
My name is Roland Harris, I'm the president of Pride's Point, which is a village within Long Bay. And Pride's Point, which is a condominium community, was uh, documented in nineteen ninety-five, and in the documentation, it was a planned unit development. And so part of that was limiting green space coverage to twenty percent. Due to some decks that were built in twenty seventeen that were somewhat uncoordinated in what was going on, we are actually over the twenty percent right now. So we're technically in violation of the, the zoning ordinance that existed at the time. I'm here tonight uh, asking for an increase to twenty-five percent, which is still well below the forty percent currently allowed for zoning for residential single family home, which Pride's Point now falls within. Um, but it was the zoning ordinance that basically says property that was under a zoning ordinance when it was developed has to stay under that zoning, zoning ordinance, and there would be no changes allowed just because they went to forty percent for, for everything new. So, um, I'm here tonight asking for the twenty, to go to twenty-five percent uh, total coverage, green space coverage, to, one, to address the fact that we're already over, and also, there is about four houses within Pride's Point that, if they wanted to add decks, would be would have issues because about, about four of the nineteen homes don't have the seven foot spacing that would be required to not be included in the green space coverage. And this all, some of this came about, cause my house last year, I, I petitioned the Pride's Point Board at the time to expand my deck, and they approved it, and I went through a laborious calculation of the green space coverage, I was gonna use about ninety-seven square feet of the available hundred and eleven square feet left. And unbeknownst to me, another house within Pride's Point also was using some of that coverage, so that's how we got above the current twenty percent. So it has been very limiting in, in things we wanna do to enhance our properties, so, that's why I'm here tonight to request that.
Okay.
Any questions?
I, 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 I don't really have a que- your application's very clear about what you wanna do.
Yes.
But the thing that confuses some of us is that you keep saying you wanna increase green space use, but you don't, you wanna decrease.
No, increase the loud coverage of green space.
I, I'm confused.
All right, current zoning is forty percent.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, they're gonna, they wanna reduce the amount of green space that exists, so, but they keep saying they wanna increase.
They wanna increase their coverage.
They wanna increase their coverage, approaching into the existing, right.
Which will reduce the green space. Correct.
Okay, just, do you get that, everybody now?
I got.
It will reduce the green space avail- uh, that's present.
Right.
Right.
Cause you're just, everything's, you're gonna increase.
But we've increased the coverage of green space, which takes away from green space.
Yeah, the coverage. Okay, but it was increase the coverage, that word was.
Yes, yes, sorry.
I just wanted to clarify that because I totally understand what you're trying to do.
Yes.
It's a minor, you know?
Now, I got a question, okay. The whole development out there was given X number for green space, which then went down to each of the, the Long Bays, okay? And then down to the pods, like this one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so all of these came down based off of those numbers back then. So, as these developments increase, does it have an adverse effect on the overall?
No, the um, each village has their uh, green space requirements, so um.
Long Bay doesn't carry the, the, the total.
Correct.
It has been divided amongst each of the pods.
Right, each, each village is, is, for lack of a better term, self-contained. And uh, the regulations are applied on a village basis. I think it's pretty safe to say that overall, the entire property, Long Bay and South Down, that, that you are, have m- m- more than the eighty percent green space combined. There's, there's a lot of areas out there that'll never be touched, that, that uh, you know, can accommodate. But within each village, which is the requirement, um, in, in the situation that, that Pride's Point is in, they're just, at, at currently, they're just barely over the, over the limit, and I'm not gonna worry about point oh one eight percent. But I understand their future plans, they're gonna increase a little bit more, so uh, I understand the, the request for the variance.
Yeah, I was just curious, cause I know there's either been one or two other villages within there that had requested increases also.
Correct.
And that's why I'm going, as each one tries to do this, does that have an adverse effect on the whole? But by indicating there, it is not gonna have that adverse effect.
I think the other thing too, uh, I'm sorry, uh, is just that th- th- this um, increase is really for uh, for like decks and, and, and amenities to the existing homes, it's not for new construction or anything else, right?
Well.
But what is it?
Correct, if you, yeah, from that standpoint, but if you, if you just give them blanket permission to go to twenty-five percent, we would not, there would be no distinction on our part of whether it's an addition or a deck or
Well.
whatever, I mean, you could, you could put that condition, but.
I think on the other villages, we put that condition in, so that.
Condition what? What, what are you saying?
We conditioned that the, that increase could only use for adding of decks and stuff, but not.
Okay, is that what you're suggesting?
Extension, that's not what he's suggesting, what I said, he said, he, they would not make a distinction. And what I said was, on other villages within, I do believe it's Long Bay, we stipulated that the green space was being used as requested for decks and stuff, so that people can enjoy their outdoor portion of their home.
Is that the case? Are you only looking at decks?
From my perspective, that would be just decks, all the homes are already built, and it goes into some of the details, but it was built, uh, Pride's Point was a, as, as a pod, you had a building envelope, you had to stay within. So, I realize the planning department doesn't recognize an envelope, but as Pride's Point, I, as the president, when people come and say, I wanna do this, whoops, sorry. I wanna do this, I said, well, you have to be within your envelope. And I believe the Long Bay Building Committee will enforce that also, I can't guarantee that, but I believe that also. Um, I'm fine with if you just stipulated for decks, cause that's the intention.
And that's what I was curious about.
Well, I mean, I mean, but, but coverage is, coverage is driveways, coverage is Oh, yeah, right. Decks and, 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 and.
But then we don't wanna give a blanket approval and have them make big huge driveways, or expand their driveways for parking?
Well, yeah, and my, my, my point that I was trying to make, and I did it poorly, I think, was i- if you say, okay, you can go to tw- twenty-five percent coverage, period, then
They can do anything.
They could come in for driveways, they could come in for additions, I mean, there are other limitations, but, but we would not be able to say, no, you can't do a driveway because the variance was for, for a deck. Now, if you put the condition on there that it's just for decks, that's fine, and, and that's enforceable, you know? But
Okay.
Um, and I just wanna make one point here, I mean, we did talk with, with legal about um, this application, because we know we're gonna get others, uh, you know, my, my suspicion is we're going to get others, and the, and if, if the, if the units of housing or the lot, depending upon the village, in this, in this case, it's a condominium, so it's really, it's really the whole lot, but uh, if, if the number of units of housing and could, could be created under the current zoning, then we could apply the forty percent coverage. But since these really couldn't be created today under the current zoning, we gotta stick with the twenty percent, cause that's, that's what was approved at the time. So that, that's, that's why we're here for the variance. I mean, cause the, the, the coverage right now is forty percent for this zone, but you couldn't create many of the villages. You can't make individual house lots. Yeah, you couldn't, right, exactly, you can't create these individual villages as they exist today under the You can't create these individual villages as they exist today under the current zoning because of lot sizes, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, right.
Even under cluster?
Even under cluster, yeah, yeah.
Roland, one question is, um, the seven-foot height exclusion, I don't understand that part.
So in accordance with the zoning ordinance for Laconia, if a deck is above seven feet, it does not count against green space coverage?
I see, if it's elevated.
If it's seven feet above the ground, right. So about, like I said, about four or five houses, their decks are maybe five feet up or, like mine was five and a half feet, so.
Any other questions at the moment? With that, I'm gonna, if you'd have a seat just for a second.
Yeah.
I'm gonna open it up to the public and ask anybody from the public if they wish to speak for against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate no one from the public would speak for against this application. Bring it back to the board. Any question, any further questions of the applicant?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Any closing comments?
Uh, no, I think I'm, said everything I need to say, thank you.
With that, I'm gonna close it to the public, bring it to the board for discussion.
I, I don't have any problems with it as long as we get the right wording in to provide for, that it's provided for decks, you know? As, as, as we were told to, instructed to, cautioned to do.
Would that like to entertain a motion?
Make a motion to accept application two oh, two oh one eight dash zero 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 six. This is Pride Point Condominium. The, uh, application is for a variance of Article two thirty-five, Section forty C. And it's relative to green space and the amount of coverage. This was, uh, this. Pride's Point was originally developed as a PUD. And, um, as that, it is restricted to the laws that were there at the time. They're looking to go from twenty percent green space coverage to twenty-five percent green space coverage overall. Coverage, developed coverage over green space. So this variance would not be, um, contrary to the public interest, is fairly internal into Pride Point community. This, uh, is, will make an adjustment so that, uh, they are not in violation and still have a little bit of leeway to make, um, other improvements like decks and only decks. Substantial justice is done and that will bring it into compliance here. And it will not diminish the, uh, value of the surrounding properties. Um, littler enforcement, uh, just means that right now that they stay, um, uncompliant. And this will bring it into compliance and allow them to, uh, adjust their taxes necessary.
I'll second it.
Is that, is that correct? Did I say the word deck enough to limit it to just?
Good job, Mike.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second discussion? There being none, all those in favor of the motion?
All right.
Okay, enjoy.
Thank you.
All right, is there anything else before the board, any other business before the board?
I have one question.
Yes.
I took a ride up around Daisy Gardner Road the other day. And, uh, do we have a time limit for when this is supposed to be?
We are, uh, we have had discussions with the, uh, property owners. Um, they, uh, actually were in the office just the other day. Um, they are making arrangements, uh, to park their cranes elsewhere. And they're also, they have, uh, arrangements to sell the storage containers. Uh, and so they'll be going off the property within a, approximately a month. There's a timing issue that just needs to occur. And at that time, they're also going to be redoing the canvas balloon structure and moving it to be in compliance with the, with the setback. They're expecting to be able to do all of that, I think, within two months.
So they have, can I, the, the big structure, the, the quantity, do they actually have to move that?
Yes, they do, yeah. Yeah, they have to move it, uh, about four feet, I think it was, from the front property line. I think they were encroaching.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any words of wisdom from the planning?
Not today.
There being none, I'd like to entertain a motion to.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Yay, all those in favor. Good night, good job. Thank you, everybody.
Robert.
One second.